I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, April 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land in our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum today, so we are going to continue on. First thing up is proclamations and presentations, and I have a proclamation to read. And after that is the presentation recognizing the Mount Pleasant Citizens Academy.
Whereas every year on April 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. And whereas, in 2022, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that 5,486 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job, a 5.7 increase from 2021. On average, a worker dies nearly every 96 minutes from a work-related injury in 2022. And whereas, in 2022, 139 workers' lives were lost through fatal workplace accidents in Michigan. And whereas, it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured or disabled or have died as a result of workplace accidents. And whereas, we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions. And whereas, recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the growth, economic growth of our state is necessary. And whereas, the Mount Pleasant City Commission wishes to pay tribute to the workers who have died or been injured or disabled in workplace accidents, we honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased work safe, workplace safety. And whereas, the Mount Pleasant City Commission renews our efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and we rededicate ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace. Now therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024 as Workers Memorial Day in Michigan, in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, and urge all citizens to recognize and honor the contributions, the Michigan's workforce, and call for increased workplace safety conditions. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 22nd day of April 2024. Thank you.
Citizens Academy, which concluded on Tuesday, April 16th, so just last week. We have here 16 participants who have had an inside look at municipal government, at the city. We had several staff that attended those meetings and provided presentations to this group. And also, they also were able to tour the facilities. And I think I usually say that it's really fun to go down the slide at the fire department or be able to see the trucks from very close at the streets department. I think everyone usually have a lot of fun. So I would also say that you recall that this is a seven-week program. It's around two and a half hours in each session. And we do get local food suppliers to provide dinner during the academy. So we provide dinner at 5:30, and then the program starts at 6:00 and ends at 8:30. It's a commitment from the, from city staff, you know, to be there, showing up at night and providing those presentations. So I also want to take some time to thank everybody that has been committed to this initiative for such a long time. And it is a great way for us to get more citizens well-informed about what we do and also wait for us to recruit for your service in case you're interested in ever serving a board or commission. There are always opportunities that are out there. But also, if you ever want to just, you know, come and attend City Commission meetings, Planning Commission meetings, we always welcome your perspective and your point of view and your expertise about the city. Or if you're a newcomer like me, which I know that there are some of you, we also welcome any, you know, ideas that can make them out of the box. So thank you so much. So I'm going to be calling each one of your names here, and the mayor is going to provide you with a certificate to thank you for your time. I would also just note that this year, staff has worked with Central Michigan University, the Executive Director of Academic and Professional Programs. So we are, now we are able to offer experiential credit through prior learning assessment for degree completion at CMU. So any student who completes the academy moving forward will be able to apply for credit for prior learning at Central Michigan University's website. So we'll call the first name, Amanda Lennon. And I'll just ask that you stay here in the middle so we can take a picture later.
That's right, team photo.
Arjun Pandey. Christina Southwell. Forrest Fennel. Jacob Sager. Jenny Harald. Joseph Carrion. Judy Lennon. Karen Fennel. Lindo Coop. Lynn Seastark. And Maria Rubik. Susan Helm. Tim Lennon. And William Garston-Lauer. Thank you so much, everybody.
Ooh, I like your, your lip.
I don't know what it looks like right now.
You don't have lipstick, do you have lipstick on? Yeah, it's really nice. I was like, I think you, if you don't have lipstick on, then there might be something wrong.
I don't know what color it is.
It's kind of like purple.
Purple, okay.
Yeah. Are we supposed to stand up?
No.
No.
We're supposed to stand here.
Because like, they're going to show up on the end. Also, no, she doesn't.
We don't want to show up. Just lean back down.
Yeah.
I'll put my head right.
Put your head on the table.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you so much for your participation.
Amy and I went through that.
Did you?
No, I never have.
You did, though, right, Andrew?
It's Miss Academy.
No.
All right, so we're going to move on to additions and or deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda from the Commission?
No.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries, so we'll move on. At this time, we're going to open the floor to public comment on agenda items. If you wish to speak on something that we have presented in the agenda tonight, you may step to the podium. You'll be given five minutes after you state your name and address. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom tonight?
There is.
There is, okay.
Hello?
Mary Ann? Are you there?
Oh, I'm sorry. It says Mary Ann. This is Teresa Turner.
Ah, okay, Teresa. Teresa, can you state your address?
I'm at 608 South Kenny Street in Mount Pleasant. And so I want to comment on the agenda item 14 concerning the landscape ordinance.
Yes.
And I did send a comment to the Commission earlier, but I want to add to that comment that if the Commission does go forward with the ordinance, that the Commission waits until summer has passed, until we go through that summer season before you do pass the ordinance, so you can see exactly how this is going to work or not work. So that's an addition to the comment that I had made earlier, that I don't, I really don't think that establishing another ordinance is what's needed. I think that if the Commission is really committed to sustainability, that establishing an incentive program to do this is the better way to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom? No? Okay. Want to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Eric Chirkover. I live at 318 East Cherry Street, right here in Mount Pleasant. I'm actually here to also talk about the proposed ordinance or the changes to the ordinance. I didn't have a whole, too much time to prepare, but I did, I did write to Mr. Wingard this morning, and I'm just going to reiterate some of the things I said to him this morning in the email. Accepting the fact that I think an ordinance is probably something we're going to have to deal with in the interim, you know, we can't just sort of make a sea change overnight. I'm really pleased to just say how, I wanted to say how pleased I am that you have taken the concerns of those of us who want a landscape naturally so seriously, and that the notion, even the notion of, of natural landscapes is now part of the ordinance, or the draft, I should say, the draft that you've, you've put together, which I don't think existed in the previous ordinance. So we're moving forward in this idea that I think is, you know, the genie's out of the bottle. I think this is the kind of landscaping that we need for the future, particularly if we care about, you know, our children and pollinators and all this sort of thing. And I know that there are a number of gardeners on the Commission, so that, that doesn't hurt. And I know that there are a number of gardeners on the commission, so that, that doesn't hurt either. So just, just the fact that we're, we're talking about it with such seriousness is for me a great source of, of hope. The 12-inch setback idea is something that I can actually get behind because if, I'm sorry if those of you who may not be aware of this, but I'll try to be brief. I don't think there's a huge crowd of people who are lining up behind me. You know, if, if we have 12 inches on sort of one end, one side of the sidewalk and on 12 inches on the other side of the sidewalk that are mowed, I think that is really, really good for having people who are accessing those right of ways, but good visibility and everything on the other side, on the inside of that area can become wild or not wild, depending on your, on your preferences. There's a lot of aesthetic things we need to consider in terms, everyone has a different aesthetic. So it's kind of arbitrary. But I think that's an attainable and, and reasonable compromise, which I'm willing to certainly do. I'm a little concerned about the enforceability of the noxious weeds part, only because, I mean, I'm interested in things botanical and even I can't identify a number of the noxious weeds that are on that list, but that's something we can probably get to later. Hopefully, people who are in violation, should we pass this ordinance in its final stage, will be given an opportunity to be made aware of what it is they should or should not have. I have a bit of a personal attitude towards the word weed. I think a weed is simply a plant whose virtues have yet to be discovered. And that's a quote, I'm not, I didn't make that up. It was Emerson or someone, but I think it's a good quote. There are no weeds in my backyard. There are no weeds in my front yard. Everything is welcome. As a matter of fact, goldenrod, which is on the list, is, is actually not that allergenic. People have missed, it's been maligned. And if you've ever had really, really good wildflower honey, chances are, goldenrod is what those bees visited. So that's just something I'd like to point, just as an example of where we sort of differ on the notion of noxious weeds. I promise I'm almost done, I swear. I want to mention that with respect to having things that are less than 12, 12 inches high, for those of us who garden and, and with flowers, we know that a lot of the really, really cool flowers grow higher than that and don't even show their full potential until they're taller than that. So I want to make sure no one is sort of savagely cutting down bee balm before it even has a chance to bloom because that would break my heart. And you might be confused a little bit because there's, there's a couple of, we can talk about this on another occasion, but there are a couple of parts of the ordinance that, the draft, I should say, that confused me just a little bit. That's pretty much all I have to say. I still think we have an opportunity for balance and, and cooperation where, where in people who want to have a green, clean, manicured lawn, that's monoculture, that's their prerogative. And I think those of us who want to go the other way and have a naturalized, sort of bringing nature to our, to our own homes, still have the opportunity to do that without any kind of reprisal. So, because I know there are fines associated with some of the things outlined in the, in the draft ordinance and that concerns me a little bit as well. People may not be able to afford them or may not even know they're in violation. So I think that's sort of what I meant to say. I think, I think it went better when I was rehearsing it in the car, but I want to thank you again. I think, I just, the fact that we're really talking about it seriously is like a reason for, for joy because there are a lot of us who really, really want to do the right thing for our future, for our children, and we really like pretty flowers and there's nothing wrong with that. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Forward. Please state your name and address.
My name is Peggy Brisbane and I live at 438 South Fancher Street in Mount Pleasant. I guess I have a question mostly. Are you making a distinction between native planting and cultivated gardens? Because my garden is between the sidewalk and the street and has been for years, as is Teresa Turner's, as is many, several gardens on Fancher Street. And in the proposal, you use the term cultivated, different from native plants and grasses. So are you seeing a distinction?
We have discussed some of that. And this is just a draft. Right, we're not moving forward on it today.
Good. Also, the 12-inch setback, I didn't quite understand. I, I read where it was, the 12-inch setback from your property line, but the 12-inch setback from the sidewalk, I don't understand why you would have 12 inches of grass arbitrarily between a sidewalk and the flowers of your park, if you're gardening in the parking, you know, in the parking area. Because that grass would just encroach into your flowers that you're trying to maintain. And to mow 12 inches of grass, I, I didn't understand what you're thinking, what the thinking was there.
Can we respond? I think, so that was actually part of the original ordinance already. I don't think it indicates that we mean to have grass per se. It's just that it can't be more than 12 inches. So it can be like a low ground cover, like, like a creeping myrtle, like, yeah. It can be like, it just can't, and the reason, and so that part was, has always been a part of the ordinance. The, the reason being is for mobility issues, for visibility issues. If some, you know, riding, you know, the kids riding a scooter, people walking, if like animals were to come out onto the sidewalk or something were to come out of the shrubbery, or for that matter, if a bicycle was to fall over and perhaps you had like a thorny plant or something like that. So the, the ordinance doesn't state, correct me if I'm wrong, that it has to be grass, just that it can't be tall for visibility and for instances such as I describe.
Okay.
And I think, I think some of these things are in place too also just for clarity in terms, or some of these things are being proposed for clarity, not necessarily for, you know, enhanced enforcement, but for more for along the lines of we wanted to be as clear as possible so that there, so definitions were followed through on, that sort of thing. So a lot of it is the same ordinance, just with these additions allowing for natural landscaping and.
Okay.
It'll be interesting to see how it plays out because my tulips go from, you know, they fill the space, so, okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay. Then we will close the public input. At this time, we're going to move to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager of dissent.
Proceed of petitions and communications this evening includes the first quarter investment report, minutes of the planning commission from March, minutes of the planning commission and downtown development authority mission picker joint meeting from March.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent items, commission. Are there any consent items you'd like to take off the consent and move into the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, manager of dissent.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held April 8, 2024. Consider resolution authorizing a 2024 Mount Pleasant area community foundation grant application for town center civic space amenities. Consider resolution and support of final approval of temporary traffic control order number 1, 2024. Consider setting a public hearing for May 13, 2024. Development district license for Narrativality Artisan Coffee Roasters LLC. Consider a contract with Borner Restoration Inc. For the DPS Masonry Screen Wall Project for $39,095 and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
I move that we accept the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to new business as we have no public hearings and our first new business is to consider the approval of purchasing a one-year access to Pacer AI software. Manager of dissent.
I made just a very brief slide deck here just to keep us on the conversation to kind of help me go along and talk to you about this tonight. So first off, what is Placer AI? Placer AI is a comprehensive GIS-integrated database of aggregate cell phone tracking data. It's utilized by many businesses to understand consumer traffic patterns, utilized by many municipalities and other government entities essentially to do the same. That's something I wanted to highlight here and some of the concerns that I've heard in, in talking with some of our partners. Placer AI and when we talk about cell phone data and the, the concerns that some folks have with that. Placer AI utilizes aggregate data. That means it's, it's data that's essentially combined for a community. It does not contain personal information, and I do want to say that again. Placer AI does not utilize any sort of personal information. There's no information about any single data point or the end user or anything like that. Placer AI only tells us about the total number of visits in a particular area or to a particular business within a given time period. Why are we interested in Placer AI? It's an industry leader trusted among many other Michigan municipalities and major corporations. They boast a 95% accuracy rate, which is confirmed by their third-party users. A little bit about the Mount Pleasant program that we're trying to design here. We would utilize the data within Placer AI to analyze consumer behavior within the area. We'd look at a number of different things. We would look at first off, event attendance. We'd be able to see how many people visit the farmer's market, how many people visit the craft beer festival, how many people visit any kind of event within the area. We'd be able to look at traffic patterns. What is the main means that people are utilizing to get there? Where are they coming from? We'd be able to look at leakage as well, too. So one of the case studies that I've talked about extensively is Best Buy. There's no Best Buy within the city of Mount Pleasant, but there's Best Buy in Midland, there's Best Buy in Lansing. We'd be able to utilize the software to understand how many visits are generated at those two Best Buys from the city of Mount Pleasant within a given year. And from there, you can utilize that to make any number of different business cases, whether that be a Best Buy ought to be located in the area or perhaps some of the things that Best Buy sells should be sold in the stores here in Mount Pleasant. We'd also look at linkages as well, too. Coming back to the farmer's market example, we could look at how many people that attend the farmer's market on a Thursday also attend other, or also go to other businesses within the downtown. How many people go to Green Tree? How many people make their way out to Mission and visit the stores out there? We'd also be able to look at comparable cities. We'd be able to analyze any number of these different things and see how Mount Pleasant stacks up amongst its peer municipalities. And then we can utilize this to tailor marketing strategies. We understand that, let's say, we have a large amount of people coming from the Grand Rapids area to a certain event. We'd be able to understand that our marketing over there seems to be effective. Maybe you want to expand marketing in that area or maybe we noticed that marketing in Detroit area doesn't seem to be very effective and so we want to increase marketing there as well for our events. Want to do this in partnerships with a number of different organizations. Central Michigan University, Mid Michigan Development Corporation, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan and Union Township. All have expressed some interest in this and we're working out the particulars on the backend, should this be approved. Just a highlight of the schedule. Quarter two and quarter three of this year, if approved, we would work with interns from Central Michigan University School of Business to analyze the data and to generate a report for us. From there in quarter four, we would work with CMU entrepreneurial students and also Mount Pleasant business community to identify the business cases that are located within the data. And then by quarter two of 2025, we'll talk about goals and objectives for 2025. Assuming that that is passed, we look to develop a database plan to deliver economic value from the study. The request before the city commission this evening is approval of a one-year contract with Placer AI for a price not to exceed $18,000 and a budget amendment for the same. And then also approval of a budget amendment for $10,000 to support an internship program for the data analysis. I have applied for a grant through the state of Michigan to cover half of that cost, but obviously, since it's still expensed out of the city, we would still need the budget amendment. That's being presented tonight. With that, are there any questions from anyone?
Commissioner Ake.
Manager of dissent, thank you for moving forward with this. I do recall that we talked about this during our goal-setting or strategic planning session a few weeks ago. So I am glad to see that, you know, there is motion. And I also appreciate the collaborative nature of this, that, you know, it's, you know, there is buy-in amongst, you know, organizations in our community and, you know, the university. This is important to me, but especially the inclusion of internship for, I'm going to assume, students. Are you considering just the students primarily from CMU or might you also consider students from the, from Mid Michigan or the tribal college? I don't know whether you're just looking at CMU primarily and I have a second part.
You bring up a good point. A couple of thoughts on this. One, I was thinking students from Central Michigan University and that just happened to be an opportunity that I was sitting down with a professor from CMU and talking about this project. And he had stated that he would be very much happy to work on a project like this with us. And so that really was the lead with CMU. I could certainly see though, and I've talked with our other partners about this, that if this really starts to gain legs and we want to continue this year after year, we would certainly want to open it up to some other opportunities.
Excellent. And a follow-up to that is the number of students you're thinking about for this internship? One, two, three, four, or?
I would like to do two, if possible.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you. Commissioner Chapman.
Well, I, I mean, I, I have some hesitations. I, I looked into Placer a lot and, I mean, it's so confusing. They use a lot of, a lot of words that are so unclear, probably for the sake of making a sale, I don't know. But my understanding is that it tracks, it, it uses, it uses apps that have an SDK and a software development kit to, and, and that's where it gets that aggregate data from apps that you've downloaded on your phone. And so somebody walks into this stage for two minutes, somebody has to be there for two minutes for it to get the data. And, and then it's anonymous. Well, I, I, I just, I'm hesitant because of the fact that we're a government agency now tracking the people. I understand it's, it's, that's, at, at the end of the day, that's the bottom line, right? We're a government agency tracking people. And that is, for me, that's just hard to say, yeah, let's do that, right? I understand that there's, that there's, that there's benefits to doing this, but it's hard to get past that for me. And so what, what is, what is the return on investment for us to say, let's spend $28,000 and here's, here's what's going to make our, helpful to our city and our people here?
Yeah. I think, I think it's those business cases between linkages and leakages. The understanding of what the consumer within the area is doing and then trying to make some sort of prediction based on that or some sort of a business case. And I know I'm being fairly vague here, but I think it's just because it's that open-ended. As I said, I utilize, let's say, the Best Buy case. What about other cases where you might be able to look at particular restaurants? What restaurants are, again, folks from Mount Pleasant area leaving to go to other restaurants in other cities? What are those restaurants? And why, you know, maybe it's Italian places and maybe we don't have enough Italian places or maybe it's, you know, some other food that we just don't have. And if you were able to say, well, you know, jeez, there's, there's 3,000 people within a 12-month period that are leaving to go to this particular restaurant. Maybe we ought to look for entrepreneurs or maybe we ought to start trying to attract businesses that would cater to those kind of needs or something like that. So I think that's the primary case there. And as with a lot of data projects too, sometimes you just never know until you see the data as well, too. And I know that's probably a tough sell, but without the data, you, you're certainly, you're kind of fumbling around in the dark is what I liken it to. With data, you at least have some hard numbers to say, you know, no, people in Mount Pleasant are, are going to these kind of places and they're leaving town and they're driving 20, they're driving 60 minutes down the road to get these kind of things.
Have we done that in the past where we've, where we've tried to attract new businesses in such a way without data? Because I don't know that we've ever even done that. So to, so to suggest that that would be something we do is, I just don't know. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna say, hey, we had an Italian oven and now it's closed. Now we see a lot of people are going to the real, the real Italian place. It's not Olive Garden, it's in like Metro Detroit. So let's try to find somebody to open that. I mean, is that what we're suggesting we're going to do? Because I just don't see that. Because I just don't see that happening.
I, I'm suggesting that, yes, but think of it this way. If you're approaching that developer, it goes one of two ways. I don't have any data. Excuse me, Brian, you should probably do an Italian oven-style restaurant here in Mount Pleasant. You'd say, okay, why? And I don't have much to back up that argument from there.
Sure.
Versus, you should do this restaurant, why? Well, because actually, we're looking at this, and we can see that, you know, let's just say, this Italian place over in Midland, this is getting 4,000 visits a year, and this Italian place over in, you know, St. Joe's, it's getting 2,000 visits from it. We, we're aggregating all of this, and we're saying that you've got 20,000 stops from the city of Mount Pleasant going to these different Italian places. If you could drive all that traffic, what does that mean for your business? And as a restaurateur, you'd be able to...
So, we do this, are we gonna make it easy for them to open a restaurant in the city of Mount Pleasant? You don't have to answer that.
Commissioner Wingard.
Couple of questions. Well, I have a bunch of questions, but I'll start with cost. You mentioned you're applying for a grant that would cover about half of the total, was that half of the total cost of the internship or the program, the 28,000?
Just the internship.
The internship, okay. Assuming we get all of the, push this back a little bit. Assuming we get all of the community partners that we're looking for onboard with this, about how much would the end cost be for the city as far as, like, the subscription for the year?
For the subscription for the year, if all partners jump onboard, and this was, because we were calculating it, and now, somewhat recently, there's been some expressed interest from the tribe on this. So, excluding them, when I was talking with the original set, and there would be five different organizations that were in on this, about 3,600 per year. Actually, now that I think about it, if you bring on six partners, you're at 3,000. Seven, I can't do that math in my head, sorry.
And then, the other question, my other ones will probably be lengthier, but if you could go back to the quarter projection, or like, the timeframe that you're looking at. So, if we got us, established the contract, it would be for, like, end of quarter one, we would establish the contract about, or start of quarter two is about when we'd be establishing the contract?
It would be in quarter two. If approved this evening, we would seek to start this program in May. So, we're probably thinking about three to four weeks.
So, quarter two and quarter three is when we're collecting and analyzing the data, and then, like, quarter four, and then, quarter two, 2025. More, are, I don't want, if we're paying for a year's subscription, I just kind of want to just double-check that we're not going to just focus on two quarters' worth of analysis, that we're going to, like, establish, like, we're going to use all four quarters. Like, does that make sense? Kind of what I'm asking.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, I don't have firm commitments on what, let's say, a quarter four or even a quarter one next year looks like, but I think that if this program is very successful over the summer here, then we would work with CMU to identify new opportunities that we could utilize for quarter four of this year and quarter one next year.
Or even Mid-Michigan, possibly, as we're talking.
Exactly.
I think, Commissioner Bush.
My question's just really short. This is like when you have an app on your phone, and it says, and it gives you the option, ask apps not to track. Is that correct?
Correct.
So theoretically, people would have the ability, as they always have, to opt themselves out. We are, they are probably, if they have not done so, already being tracked by A S R AI, it's just that we're paying access to the data.
Yeah. And I should say, Pacer AI only purchases the data, so it's all of the other application owners that are tracking the data.
Commissioner Ake.
Commissioner Bush has addressed a little bit of what I was going to say, and I'm glad that you said that. But, you know, the reality is that we are being tracked all the time, your cellphone. Somebody can tell, you know, tell where you are. If we're going to be economically sustainable, we've been talking about this, and economically viable, you know, given that we don't have huge industries here, we ought to know where our people are going or what's, you know, causing changes in our community. When I attended the MML, you know, the league convention in Lansing, this, was it March?
Yeah.
Early April, March, one of the things they talked about is the fact that, you know, Michigan is becoming a city of a lot of senior people, and people are moving, migrating out of, you know, there is a flight, an exodus out of Michigan. And they did some work collecting data to look at what was causing the flight. One of the things they talked about had to do with the younger generation desiring to live in communities that provided amenities for them, where they could work, you know, they could work and live close to places where they purchased, you know, businesses where they purchased, you know, food and exercise and a whole range of things. I do think that if we're going to survive in this particular century with all sorts of competitions, we ought to know what brings people to Mount Pleasant, to our communities, why people are exiting our communities. We need to collect the data. And if it is not through this particular software, well, you're gonna have to do some surveys. Are you, you know? I mean, send surveys to everybody to ask them why they go to Midland to, you know, to purchase things. I think that it is a reasonable ask, I, you know, given that the environment already is one where we're being, you know, tracked all the time. So, I, I do think that this is something that we, we need to do, that we should do in order to better understand how economic factors affect our community and what hopefully would make us whole and bring people to downtown, or to the environment in general.
Are there any further questions?
Yeah, so, getting, this is getting a bit more into the, like, the brick and mortar of it, I guess. So, talking about Pacer AI, when the company, Pacer, the information is not gathered by Pacer. It's gathered by, again, like, all the different apps and services that are on phones. When they purchase the data, as I understand it, that information, they don't purchase any data that identifies people. I'm pretty sure part of their purchase plan is they strip away that data, so they don't actually, I'm pretty, if, again, I'm pretty certain they don't have that data to offer. So, it's just, again, the anonymized data that they're talking about that they have. My biggest question, as far as concern for, for privacy goes, because I, that is a serious concern for me. Again, like, let's say we have the Mount Pleasant Brewing Festival downtown. We know we get 200 people coming in from Midland, 50 people coming in from Shepherd, and two people coming in from Beale City. Pacer AI, as I understand it, would be able to identify, like, they go back to Beale City, and they're just little blips on the map. With two people being identified, how, I guess, kind of like, how accurate as far as, like, tracking goes and everything and placement goes, do you know? Does that get? Because that, that would be the only, like, a street address, if you, someone really took the time and everything, would be kind of the worst-case scenario that someone could get from that.
Yeah. You can't get where, let's say, the, the concept of where the cellphone lives, and they talked about that in their presentation. So, they would say, okay, within the city of Mount Pleasant, let's just say there's 20,000 cellphones that live here, that's, that's how many we've got. You can't pinpoint that on the map as to where they live or anything like that. You just know that that cellphone and what they call it, what they say, lives there. It means it spends eight hours, sort of docile typically in the evening hours, and that's how they account for it. But you're not going to be able to see, let's say, where that cellphone originated to make that trip. You're only going to see the blip on the final end, where it would show up at the beer festival or something like that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does more there. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I will open the floor for a motion.
Okay, so, Commissioner, Manager Desens, so I, I move that we approve a contract with Pacer AI for one year of access for a price not to exceed $18,000 and a budget amendment for the same, and a budget amendment for $10,000 for the internship program. Funds available, sorry. So, the justice just...
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I'll open the floor for discussion among the commission. Commissioner Wingard.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I heard, thought it was gonna be Bush at first. I think I'm gonna support the, support the motion. Personally, the tracking of data, I, I think it is a serious concern, but is it something that, and morally, I think, like, not, like, the use of, like, cellphone technology by the marketplace to track data of individuals, I think that isn't great. But I think action regarding that needs to take place at a much higher level for anything to be done about that. That would be probably state or congressional level. The data that we would be getting with Pacer AI is stripped down enough as to be innocuous, really, it's already available. I think there are benefits. I'm interested to see what the one-year contract can do. I would look critically at, like, anything beyond, beyond the one year, just again, to see, like, what we can accomplish with that, but I'm willing to give it a go, so.
I think it's different if the Chamber of Commerce is doing this, but when it's the city government doing it, I think, I think it's gonna be negatively looked upon.
What if I did it?
What's that?
I could do it. I'm a private individual.
No, no, I understand that. I'm saying, it's gonna be looked, I think, I think there's gonna be negative perception.
100%.
And I totally, I understand what it is. I just, I, I think, I think there could be a lot of negative perception to say that we're paying into a service that's gonna track our people. That's what we're doing. I mean, when you boil it down, that's what we're doing, and so, I, I don't know about it.
Commissioner Bush.
I think that we have heard from our constituents many times that there are things that are lacking in Mount Pleasant. And how many times have we been on social media and somebody says, well, we should get a da-da-da, and we should get a da-da-da, and a da-da-da, and a da-da-da? And then, part of our job as city commissioners is to help bring new businesses to, to Mount Pleasant. And I, I agree with you, you know, Commissioner Chapman, that there is elements of this that make it uncomfortable for me. I would have liked to maybe have a plan in place that says, like, is, is there a model of other city governments using data like this to? So, other city governments have done this type of thing, and in cooperation with other organizations? I, I, I agree, though, that I, I think I would not like to see it done without cooperation of other agencies, first of all, for efficiencies and also for, for unity, but being that it is our responsibility as a commission to help encourage business in Mount Pleasant, how are we going to decide what businesses the city needs unless we collect some data? So, for that reason, I feel as if I would support as well.
Commissioner Ake.
As somebody who comes from a place where, you know, institutions do a lot of nefarious things to people, yeah, I'm worried about what somebody, what, you know, a government or an organization does with information about me. I grew up in, in places where everything you do is monitored. In fact, that's the word my people would use. They'll say, you know, where I grew up, they'll say, you're being monitored. We're being monitored all the time. And I'm not looking at this, you know, callously, and I'm being very careful about what I'm saying here. I understand your concern. I understand, you know, the worry. I do think that the reality of the world in which we live now is one where there is a lot of data mining. So, you're using the word data, you know, tracking, you know? Others would say they're engaged in data mining, because that's what, what they're engaged in. An organization is doing this, the, the difference is that we are collaborating with other institutions in our community to say, hey, we really do need this data, we're interested in what, what information it provides us, so that we can better understand the community in which we live and the needs of the community in which we live. Now, here's a question for you. What is the difference between the city collaborating with these other groups to get this data, where the city at least has some control in terms of, you know, whatever criteria it provides, you know, to the organization? And if the city were just to simply go out and purchase the same information from this organization, where it has absolutely no say-so? I mean, data, the organization gives it to you because you need it. We need it. We need to know what's happening to our city. We know we've lost people in Mount Pleasant, businesses are closing. So, why are they closing? What's driving them out? What's driving people out? What's making people come from other areas to Mount Pleasant? Where are people going to shop and eat? Okay? We need that information. So, the alternative, there are two other possibilities. We conduct a survey of everybody who lives in our vicinity, well, good luck with that, or we purchase the information from another organization that's already doing it, but we don't know, you know, they're asking either similar questions, or we actually have very little control over the mechanism, the, the questions we ask. Or we do it ourselves in collaboration with other institutions, you know, that also have to be responsible to the government. By the way, CMU is not going to engage in this and just simply go, yeah, let's use people's individual information, just like that. I don't think that the tribal college would. I don't think that Mid-Michigan would, because there would be some control mechanisms there to make sure that we don't abuse the information we get or people's confidential information. I do think that, you know, I, I wouldn't do it if that's going to, if we are going to engage in egregious acts that might endanger people or make them seriously vulnerable. So, I think, you know, that you can look at it as data mining or some kind of survey, because there is need in this community, and we have been told that there, there is need here. What is that need? Or what are those needs? We have been told over and over that people are fleeing. I do remember the first meeting I came to, people were talking about businesses shutting down or people leaving. What's driving them out? What's driving businesses out? Therefore, if we know that information and we have that information, we might be able to then say, these are the kinds of businesses that can sustain our community, that we can attract, and these may be the ways in which we could do this. This is, you know, I mean, you know, I, I want to support it. I, yeah, I worry about the use of personal confidential data, but we have said that that information would be stripped from, you know, whatever data is collected. I do think we need to take a look at the information that would help us build a better future.
Commissioner Bush.
I, I would just ask, perhaps, when the collaborate, if, if this does go through, if, as part of the collaboration with the other agencies, okay, there is also a sense of transparency and communication, because, for example, let's just say that the survey result comes back, and we have 20,000 visits a year at an Italian restaurant, or 20,000 years, or 20,000, 20,000 visits at a Asian grocery. What would happen if, like, you know, Union Township and the tribe and Mount Pleasant all, well, let's get a Asian grocery here as soon as possible, that there wouldn't be, that there would be cooperation? And then, I'm just kind of curious how that cooperation would look, because there is some level of competition between some of these agencies, but I would just kind of trust that that's already been thought of, and you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't think we would compete with one another for something like that. I think, in fact, if anything, you know, both organizations, especially between us and, let's say, the township, just understand, like, it's for the, it's for the customers that are out there. Whether it's on one side of whoever's taxing jurisdiction really doesn't matter that much to, to us, yeah.
I think, I, again, I totally understand this. You drive by, maybe, maybe you're aware, a lot of marketing, of marketing companies do this. You drive by a billboard, there's technology in that billboard that knows you drove by it. It tracks your data, they sell it to all the, this is what they do. It's different when the city government is doing it. That's all I'm saying. And, and the reality is, Big B's not gonna come here because they look at, they look here. They're gonna have their own data. Chick-fil-A is not coming here because they have their own data. They know there's not enough people here to support that. And so, to say, and, and developers aren't necessarily coming here because we reach out to them to do, developers are having a hard time doing anything in the city of Mount Pleasant. So, I don't think the data is gonna be helpful. I, with that, I think that the businesses that would come in, that we might use to influence them with this data, they have their own data. They're not gonna trust our little, our little collection of data when they have data from all over the United States. of data when they have data from all over the United States. So I'm not going to say anymore about this. I think you know where I stand.
I think you're being, I think you're being cynical, but.
I'm not at all.
Well, I mean, that's the real, you know, you're being cynical. That's okay, too.
I'm not being cynical.
Okay, okay. I will just, I will accept, I will accept your view, but I also would say I want to disagree with you.
That's okay.
Let's just do that, you know?
I agree in the sense that, you know, for example, the Best Buy example, the Best Buy is definitely going to have their own data, you know, like, you know, but that's where we get, you know, you know, community members who shout out, we want this thing right here, you know, Chick-fil-A or whatever it is. And I'm looking at Mount Pleasant trying to help develop this data, which is completely anonymous. There is zero tie to any human individual or address at the point we get it, correct? Right?
Correct.
Correct. That the smaller businesses and the possible startups and the ones that are, and that's why I'm really glad to see you working with the Mid Michigan Small Business Development. This is exactly, I mean, do they, I feel like they would already do some of this even, but no?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, yeah.
I don't think SBDC does anything like this.
So this is going to be for somebody, and I know where you're coming from in terms of it being initiated by the city, but hey, you know, we are supposed to be doing things, and here we are doing something, and we're inviting other members to the table. And those members, all of us together, are a very legitimate group of individuals to pursue this type of data and to use the, use the information.
I have one last question. I'm going to assume that at the end of the year or even before the end of the one year, you are going to provide us with some report. If we say yes, you're going to provide some kind of updates, maybe quarterly updates or, you know, half-year updates, but there will be some kind of report, you know, to tell us the kind of information you've gathered, whether you've gathered information that's that will provide you or that has provided you with the information you're seeking and, you know, what next?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to provide the city commission with updates, let's say, as each of those phases of the particular study moves forward. So at the end of the internship phase this summer, then the completion of our work at the end of fourth quarter, and then what work we do by quarter two of 2025, and also anything in between that we end up doing.
Okay. I'm just going to say that, sorry. If we were doing this by ourselves, I would worry. But we're doing it in collaboration with other entities that also have to worry about their own integrity. You know, they have to worry about, yeah, I mean, they have to.
And I want to make this clear. I'm not saying that anybody that is involved here, we're putting all our trust in the company, not the people, right? Not, not just the people here. We're trusting that that company is, yeah, we're legitimate, we're not doing anything. We don't know that, right? And so I'm done, I'm done talking about this.
Okay.
Vice Mayor? After listening to my esteemed colleagues and hearing pros and cons, I think I'm going to be in favor of this.
Okay. Are there any more questions, any more discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor considering to approve the purchase of one-year access to Pacer AI software for $18,000 and for $10,000 for interns and consider a budget amendment of the same, say yes.
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 All those opposed? No.
No.
Motion carries. We're going to move on to the adoption of the 2025 goals and objectives. Manager, just sense?
We'll go something a little less controversial.
[laughing]
I'm just going to go ahead and start here on my presentation. First off, just want to take some folks through the goals development process overview that we utilize here in the city of Mount Pleasant. First off, we started with internal staff meetings on goals and objectives that occurred within the organization quarter one of 2024. That eventually led to a facilitator-led discussion, which was held on March 13, 2024. That was with the city staff. From then, we had the facilitator come in and talk with the senior management team as well as the city commission. We did that session on April 1, 2024. And here tonight, we present to you the goals and objectives for 2025 for consideration of adoption on April 22. We talked about a number of different themes going into all of these sessions that we had, and two themes in particular, staffing and inflation. And this just, I think, goes to show that a lot of the general market forces that businesses feel, we feel them as municipal government as well, too. Currently, you have a lot of jobs that are available out there, and so retention of staff is very difficult. We're also finding ourselves within a time of a lot of retirements within the city. And so in trying to onboard new individuals across the city's various divisions, get them trained up and get them proficient, all at the same time poses some challenges to us, as well as inflation, higher costs of doing business, especially we see it in our infrastructure-related projects. That said, I present to you the 2025 goals and objectives. Our first goal, maintain service excellence. The city of Mount Pleasant is committed to sustaining the current level of service across all departments to ensure the safety and satisfaction of all residents and visitors. The objectives under this goal, ensure that all city departments consistently maintain established service standards and benchmarks to provide efficient and effective service to residents and visitors. Implement recommendations from the fire study to optimize fire service delivery, enhance emergency response capabilities, and improve overall fire safety within the community. Prioritize proactive maintenance and infrastructure upgrades to ensure the reliable operation of the water distribution system, minimizing disruptions and ensuring access to clean and safe water for all residents. Regularly inspect, repair, and maintain roads and sidewalks throughout the city to enhance safety, accessibility, and mobility for all users. Lastly, implement comprehensive asset management practices to effectively maintain cemetery facilities and grounds. Our second goal, promote professional development. We will prioritize recruitment, training, and development opportunities across all departments to enhance the capabilities and professionalism of our workforce. Our objectives, implement targeted recruitment strategies to attract and select highly qualified candidates who possess the skills, qualifications, and values necessary to excel in their respective roles within the organization. Develop comprehensive onboarding and training programs for new hires to ensure they receive the necessary knowledge, skills, and resources to perform their duties effectively and integrate seamlessly into their roles and organizational culture. And build leadership development programs to identify, nurture, cultivate emerging leaders within the organization, fostering continuity and succession planning to ensure a strong and capable leadership pipeline for the future. All of this, from hiring to training to development, and then eventually building our leadership team for years to come. Address community needs. Proactively address community needs, including mental health issues, economic development, and environmental sustainability through collaborative efforts across all divisions. Our objectives, implement initiatives to enhance refuse and recycling services. Deploy smart meter technology to enhance service delivery, including real-time monitoring of utility usage, identifying opportunities for energy efficiency and conservation, and providing residents with tools and resources to better understand and manage their utility consumption. Lastly, develop and implement outreach programs to increase citizen engagement and education on key community issues. Implement strategic planning. Our goal will be to develop and implement comprehensive strategic plans to guide the future growth and development of the city, focusing on long-term sustainability and resilience. We will do this by conducting a thorough assessment of the city's motor pool operations to identify areas for improvement, such as optimizing vehicle usage, reducing maintenance costs, and implementing fuel-efficient and environmentally-friendly practices to enhance the efficiency and sustainability of the city's fleet management. We'll develop and implement a wellhead protection plan ordinance to safeguard the city's drinking well sources from contamination. And we'll collaborate with key stakeholders to develop and implement a comprehensive economic development plan that identifies strategic priorities, opportunities for growth, initiatives to attract investment, create jobs, and foster economic prosperity. And our last goal, enhance financial management. Improve financial management practices, including budgeting, accounting, and revenue generation, to ensure fiscal responsibility and transparency. We'll do this by reviewing the creation of a dedicated grant writing program within the city to systematically identify, pursue, and secure grant opportunities from various sources. Actively seek out and apply for grants from various sources to supplement the city's budget, fund critical projects and initiatives, and reduce reliance on taxpayer funds. We'll conduct a comprehensive review of accounting policies and administrative procedures to ensure alignment with regulatory requirements and best practices. And lastly, we will evaluate utility billing fees and policies to ensure sufficient funding is in place to protect public health and maintain critical infrastructure while working to keep our rates as affordable as possible. The request before the city commission this evening is the approval of the proposed 2025 goals and objectives. With that, are there any questions?
Commissioner Chapman?
Oh, I have a, I have a couple of things. The, on the, going, just starting from the top, the, talk about the fire study. I'm just curious, it's pretty broad. And so I'm curious what that means to, to implement the recommendations from the fire study.
Yeah. In particular, with the fire study, there's a number of different things we were looking at. Primarily, the training and some of our operational efficiency, obviously our equipment, those are the ones that rank high. But then we're also looking at anything that was promoted within the fire study from considering a different avenue for the rental inspections, maybe doing that outside of the fire department. So that way, we create more time for other fire-related activities, training, those kind of things. I know the fire department has discussed other inspections as well, too, and pre-planning. And so we're starting to explore some of those concepts as well, too. And then lastly, there were some other recommendations related to the schedules of fire department as well as the physical fitness and health capabilities.
And they talked a lot about, we spent $60,000 doing the study, so it's really important that we're implementing it. One of the things they talked about was a three- to five-year strategic plan. And so that wasn't in the, I thought maybe it was in four, and it wasn't. And so I think for me, that's important because I don't know anything about the fire department and how it runs. I just know what that guy stood there for an hour and a half and told us, right? And so we, as a city, are trusting that he's going to give us the gold standard of what to do. And so one of those were the three-to-five-year strategic plan, the training, like you talked about, and new employee. And so I, it's very broad. And so those are important to me because that's just what he told us we needed to do. And so we just have to trust him. And then the.
If I can, can I, can I address that? Because Chief Loria and I had talked about this as well, too. And we decided to not necessarily call it out in here only because a couple of different things. As we go through the fire study right now, we start to work through the prioritization and how the schedule of the newly implemented operations will go. And we think we're going to get that done before 2025. So I think that that's actually something we'll have done before the 2025 goals and objectives.
Okay.
And then the other thing was, the five is a lot about grants. And we had talked about hiring a position as a grant writer. Is that, is that a goal? Is it part of that goal? I understood it to be, and it's not in there.
Yeah, we didn't call out the position, but we did say, review the creation of a dedicated grant writing program. I did want to leave some movement in there, but that is primarily what we're looking at, is how could we do this? You know, is this going to be a full-time position? Is this going to be part-time position? Is this a different program altogether?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Those are robust goals.
That they are.
Yeah.
I will.
We created them, remember? We said that.
We all worked on it.
They cleaned them up. They, yes. Good job.
Thank you.
I'll consider a motion at this time?
I want that we accept the 2025 goals, city goals as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just a brief thank you again. I felt really good at the last, at our, at our meeting for this. We felt very relieved that so many things that we had done, even in the past year, were carrying through. And it seemed like, wow, almost like we planned it and we succeeded.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job, manager.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor of adoption of the 2025 goals and objectives, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move on discussing the managed natural landscaping ordinance. Director Loria, are you gonna, you're gonna tee that up for us? You're gonna let him do it? Okay.
I'm going to go ahead. I'm teeing up Director Loria.
Okay.
He's going to lead us. He's got this. He's running straight down the center.
All right.
So after discussion at a couple of work sessions with the city commission, a draft form of the proposed natural landscaping ordinance is now available for review. Staff highlighted the changes from our last discussion as proposed two items for discussion. One is the change of the title to manage natural landscapes, and the discussion around a registered managed natural landscape, a plan that someone will register with the city. So I want to hand it off to Director Loria, just have him talk about some of the research that he's done that has led us down this road, and then also obviously get some input from the city commission as well.
So the first thing you'll notice is that I kind of took the liberty of changing it from planned to manage natural landscape. First and foremost, I didn't like having a definition, defining what planned natural landscape is with planned in the definition. And so as I did research, I came across a Michigan case in which, two things. Number one, the judge said in this case that since the city required no plan, it's whatever the homeowner or the owner of the property planned to do. And that plan was within his head. And it could be changed without any notification or anything like that. And in addition to that, they, he said that planned indicates something to the, a plan can be best well-laid in his terms and not come out the way it's desired. And he opted for a, he suggested they look for a different word. And so I found, and I think this, I went, I was, I think I found it in Minnesota, of managed natural landscaping with planned involved in the definition of that. Before I go into the, excuse me, before I go into the requirements of the Green Bay ordinance, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Golden Rod has been removed. So there was some things that were said earlier that, that there was some confusion that I want to make sure that we're clear on. It doesn't say anything in there that you can't have managed natural landscape higher than 12 inches. You can only have it 12 inches in the.
A 12-inch.
Right away.
Yeah.
Right away. So there's reasons for that. And some of you pointed those out. And then the one thing the gentleman said was about aesthetics is arbitrary, which leads me to my registration suggestion for you guys to consider. And I have to give credit to Green Bay. In their ordinance, registration is required, any owner or record of property and any tenant, upon signwriting consent of the owner of the property, may implement a planned, they use planned still, natural landscaping area on their property or upon registration with the Department of Public Works. Now, I'm not saying that we can't change where it's registered. So I don't want people to, you know, start throwing up their hands saying, God, he's assigning me work. We can do that anywhere. And then it says this, registration shall include the following information. A plan of the property drawn to scale indicating the location of all property boundaries, structures, sidewalks, driveways, and roadways, and the boundaries of the proposed planned natural landscaping area. No boundary survey is required. Property boundaries and other information may be indicated on an aerial photograph or other suitable and readily available base map. So we're not getting a land survey out there. That's not what this is trying to accomplish. B, a clear description, illustration, or photograph of the type or types of edging proposed, including materials, height, and proposed placement. C, planning, a planning plan indicating that plant species. C, planning, a, a planning plan indicating that plant species and/or seed mixes to be used. Any proposed change in grade or excavation required beyond standard excavation and soil replacement for establishment of a planned natural landscape. So that's what they require. Now what does that do? Well, number one, it shows that there's a plan, and we have a copy of it, and what's intended, and what it should look like, including species and, and whatnot. And when you take that plan, and we would put it in some sort of, in our, in our existing software, and we go past my house, and you look at, in there, and I have, um, I have a whole bunch of, uh, Japanese knotweed, which is invasive species, you say, well, you pull up that plan, and nowhere did it say Japanese knotweed is going to be in that landscaping, and therefore I'm in violation. So it, it, you can get accountability based on that submitted plan, and if it isn't followed, I mean, the owner may have planned it, but nobody knew about it, and that is the crux of the case when you talk planned natural landscaping without any registering. So I, I didn't wanna include the writing necessarily, because I knew people would automatically get confused, and I was really nervous about the, the change in the name, um, but I explained that and clarified a few other things, so I'm open to questions.
Commissioner Bush?
Well, I, I'm uncomfortable with the notion of having, of requiring a registration. I think it feels, on, on one level, it feels far too HOA for, for Mount Pleasant, and I also think that it might be, like, duplicating what we're already doing, because our, the, the plan we have in place, or the...
Ordinance.
Ordinance that we have in place right now, planned is like the word of the evening, the ordinance that we have in place right now is, is full of definitions, which, which it does seem wordy, as we may have gotten from, from an email today, but I do feel like we needed that there for clarity, and that, um, if, if you're not allowed to have Japanese knotweed, it says that already as an invasive species, doesn't matter where it is and where it's, i- if it was planned, it just means that it's, it's not allowed no matter what, even if it was planned or not. I'm just concerned that if we ask people to go through this extra step of, of registration and planning, I mean, it, it, does that mean they're gonna have to change it midway through the year if they decide that this thing fails and they'd rather plant this thing, or, or if they have to rip this whole thing up? It just feels like, uh, it feels excessive, and I've got more reasons why, but I'll let maybe Commissioner Lingard speak.
Um, did Green Bay talk about, their ordinance talk about what happens if someone changes their plan midway through? Like, I, like, if I have a really ambitious plan, and then, like, say, it's too much, I need to scale it back, so I change it what I'm doing?
Yeah, you'd have to submit a new plan. You're, you're required to update it.
Gotcha. The other, the other portion, the question I had was, um, I believe it talked about excavation.
Yeah.
If the excavation, like, that they were describing and everything, would, um, would a resident need a permit, um, for, like, that in Mount Pleasant or anything, I guess? Like, it, like, my question is, it sounds like they were talking about, like, larger, like, creating a small hill or something, that's the impression I got.
I, I think you're, I mean, I don't think you need a, I do, but I don't think you would need a, um, a backhoe to plant a flower, so my, my point is, is it says standard excavation, what, what standard excavation for, for a flower or a plant?
I, I just assumed that...
Four or six inches? I, I, I mean, I'm not a gardener, I don't know.
Yeah, I just assumed that, like, excavation of that kind in a residential area would already be covered as part of our Sydney ordinance, uh, ordinances.
They wouldn't need a permit.
Oh, okay.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I think I agree with Commissioner Bush that it seems excessive to have to register it, and even the word managed seems to give some confusion, I would go without that word.
Okay.
Commissioner Chapman?
Um, well, one thing that Eric had talked about, uh, when he, he was talking about, like, well, how do I know, he was talking about enforcement, and that's always been my concern, how do you actually enforce this? And I don't know, but I do know that if you do that, one, people will be more intentional, you know, 'cause it, it's just, it's just a weird sequence of events, of what we've done, 'cause now we've passed the International Property Management Standard, right? And then we've said, well, part of that is having your lawn, we, we took those out, that, because we already had a lawn ordinance, and so now, now we're adding this, which I, if people wanna do it, fine, I, I mean, again, it's an aesthetic thing, that's, I like my, my lawn green, and, and we used a word that was mono something, that's how I like my lawn, some people don't, that's fine, but I think, I don't know if that's the right, right way to do it or not, but I know if we don't do it some way, it's gonna be impossible to enforce, and could cause more problems than, than, uh, you know?
I will tell you, enforcement, as it's written, as you have expressed the desire to want this, what's planned? What does that mean? And, and, and it can change, because you can't hold anyone accountable if there's no standard, if there's no plan.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Bush?
The, how somebody would violate this ordinance would be to have a plot of a noxious weed, which we've defined, and we've defined, or have something that's grown over 12 inches in the areas that we've defined, we've defined that, those are the things that will violate this ordinance, I see as it written. So the ordinance is in place to let people know more what they can now do, which are new, hopefully, new things that are now allowed to be done, which, many of which are being done anyway, we just have ordinances in place for situations like this, in case there is a problem. And so I feel like we're, we're trying to put something in place that opens up more permissions, but still is very specific about what we don't allow, which are some things that we already don't allow, which we already enforce only when it's necessary, like the 12 inches and that sort of thing. Like, people don't have to register that they're gonna have a lawn instead of a, you know, and I, 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 I feel like I'm not making sense.
We do have to register, uh, the amount of concrete or hard surface compared to grass, that has to be in a site plan review when you're doing this kind of thing, so it's not, it's not un, un-typical, is that a word? Did I make that up?
Unheard, good.
I was gonna say abnormal, to, for this to be the case, I mean, we, we have site plan reviews for a lot of different things, and so, um, it, it, I, I don't think it's much different than the things we already have for the site plan reviews to do these kind of things. I mean, when you put in a deck, you have to have a site plan review, when you do the, you just do, so it's pretty normal, I, I think, to do this kind of thing. And, and I think too, it might, it, it might, uh, help people to, 'cause I know it's a lot of work, right? And we've talked about this, that it's a ton of work to do this, so you have to be super intentional about it, and if, if you're gonna be intentional about it, I, I think to, to submit a plan, this is what I'm gonna do, I don't know that it's a big issue, I mean, I've had to do that over and over for different things I've done, not, I mean, I don't do that, but, so, I, I, I don't think it's atypical to do that.
I, I guess I'm still confused about why it makes it so much different for enforcement, 'cause I feel like we've already put in this ordinance what it is that's a violation, so honestly, whether or not you have a planned natural managed landscape or not, um, you could still get a, uh, a violation for one of these instances, like, let's say, I don't have a planned natural landscape, or I've never even heard of it, and, but yet I have something that falls into that category, you know, right up next to my house or whatever, like, and is that, am I gonna get punished for, or am I gonna get cited because I didn't register it, even though I don't even know what it is? Like, and then, and then you have to define whether or not somebody's garden bed is a planned natural landscape, or if it's just a part of their lawn.
You're almost making my case for me, Liz, because you, you are saying things that we have in place right now that aren't clear, and all's I'm looking for is, is for this to be successful, and, um, I can tell you that, uh, going to court and getting embarrassed on a clumsily written, I'm not suggesting this is all, but on a ordinance that can be sidestepped is not fun, it, it, and it doesn't bode well for the city, and so I, all's I'm trying to do is make this ordinance successful. You guys get to determine what you do and how it's done. So, if you don't want managed, I'll change it back to planned, I have no problem with that. If you don't wanna register, we don't have to register, so...
Director Loria, did we speak with the city attorney on the word managed versus planned?
They made the changes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rowland?
It just seems to me that for a gardener, there's been more time trying to plan, submit permits and permissions than actually gardening, and it's, it's confusing, um...
Not a permit, though. It, all's, it, it's saying, submit a plan, it's not, it's not a permit.
But there's also different styles of natural gardening, so if you submit a plan and, say for instance, the seeds or the plants aren't in stock, and you change it up, you now have to submit, and that's crazy, because gardening, sometimes it's a crapshoot, sometimes plants die, sometimes they go wild, and so I don't see how this makes it simpler for your average person that wants to try this out. Because a seed mix can have many different plans, and some of them may take, and some of them may not, some of them are perennials, annuals, some don't sprout to the following year, so basically, if you have different conditions, like it's too wet, it's, there's a drought and whatnot.
I, when you, um, you threw in a new word that I did not consider, if you want it simple, I, we can do simple.
Yeah, we wanna encourage those that wanna do the natural gardening, let's simplify the process. We already are confused with the current ordinance, because it's so wordy and vague and full legalese, that your average layperson wouldn't know what to make heads or tails of. We need to really simplify this, it shouldn't be this difficult.
Liz, answer him.
I, I'm trying to find a, I feel like I'm trying to find a better way to make the point I, I was trying to make. We live next door to each other, let's just say, we both have identical gardens that would possibly fall under a, a, a managed natural landscape, okay? We've, we've both planted the same things, we, he has registered a plan, I have not registered a plan. We both end up with a big patch of this invasive weed. My, me without a plan, him with a plan. The end result is both of us have the same violation. I don't understand why me not being registered makes it any different, we both have this infestation of a noxious weed, so, so that's, that was the point I was trying to make. What's the difference between...
You know, I, I've, I've been on a lot of, uh, complaints, and people always say, I didn't know, and part of the education period is becoming familiar with, with ordinances, which we both know that, um, the majority of the time, that isn't the case, that isn't the case. What this does is, um, when someone brings their plan in, and in your dynamic, let's say you're, you, you live next to Mr. Chapman, Commissioner Chapman, and he has his beautiful lawn, and you didn't realize that there has to be 12 inches, so now, you know, he's getting sick and tired of your, your plants coming over, and, and, you know, people don't knock on neighbors' doors anymore, and so now the city gets involved. Go ahead.
What if, what if instead of like, a, 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 a registered plan, what if it was just simply a, I've acknowledged that I have read the ordinance and understand the distances and will abide by, da-da-da, what if it's just a signature, instead of actually submitting what you're actually going and where, maybe just a, an acknowledgement that, like, I'm aware of the ordinance, and I've read the ordinance, and something, would that be simp, like, something simpler?
It's, it's just gotta be simple.
Yeah, is that, is that, is that simple enough? Is that too simple? Just, if, if we were just to say, hey, I've read the ordinance, and I agree to follow the boundaries and that sort of thing?
What about the ones that don't walk in and sign that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I just don't think we're gonna be able to get people to register plans, I think that's excessive, I, I think it would be, as an extra step, would be something like, if they wanted, if we were getting forward with a program and wanting to do incentives and education and stuff like that, you could sign to be recognized for your, um, managed landscaping.
Okay. Commissioner Oka?
Okay, somebody who gardens, I'm sitting here quaking, because now I'm getting worried about what I should or not have, what I should or should not have in my yard, and the fact that, you know, plants do migrate to other people's yards, right? So now what? My, my neighbor is going to take me to court because my plants, oh, the squirrel dug up some bulb and went and planted it in that other yard. I didn't know the squirrel was gonna do that, so, but I do think, I, I mean, anybody who gardens knows that happens, right? Or the bird, you know, eats, you know, some seeds from your plant and transports it somewhere, and now your neighbor is vexed that that's happening, okay? So, you know, it's not your fault. But the point that I'm trying to, you know, what I'm trying to figure out here is, I, I, I think what I'm hearing is concern over the idea of registering your plan, okay? I have two questions. One, if you're gonna register that, is there cost involved, or do they just simply come, you know, to you and say, here is what I'm, what I'm doing?
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be a cost involved.
Okay, all right, that's okay, that's okay. So the other part then has to do with the fact that we have already delineated, you know, plants that we consider, no, no, you know, we're saying, these, you can't, you know, these are the things that we consider problematic, right? So if we already have those plants in place, why then do we need to have this other piece where you now have to register and say, this is what I'm planting, this is what I'm planting? Bear in mind that hybrid plants also sometimes revert, I've got a couple of them, my peonies going back to the, the root, not what I bought, they did what they're supposed to do for one year, second and third year, new shoots came up, I didn't plant those, so, you know, so if we already have those plants that we say we don't want, or that we don't encourage in your garden, wouldn't that be enough as a way of checking what people, people have? I would think so.
If, if you think it's enough, then I'm good with that.
I'm just worried about the registration, because I won't do it, you know, I'm gonna, I mean, not me, I'll do it, I mean, I will go, but I can hear some people saying, I'm, I can tell you, my neighbors, they'll call me and say, no, I'm not doing that, you know, and they'll tell me that, so, you know?
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, um, registration is not something that the commission is supportive of?
Yeah, I'm troubled by that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to say, um, that I am, I am still, um, supportive of using managed rather than planned.
I like managed.
I don't wanna use planned, I really would like to use managed.
If it comes down to, like, the legal terminology of it, I, it's kind of like, I guess, who, whom, I'm not a lawyer and everything, so if, if the lawyers, the attorneys in court cases are telling us that, so like, have enforceability of this, we need to change it to manage, that, that tracks for me, yeah.
And I actually liked managed better, because I feel like it's more realistic for a natural landscape, because not everything always goes as planned, but it still doesn't mean it doesn't work, so managed, as long as it's, we're managing for unwanted variables, which we then define.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, I did see somebody raise their hand in the audience, is there... Is there? Well, because we do have public comment again after we're done. All right.
So with the changes, just so I'm clear, what else doesn't work? If 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 the majority is good with the the managed, what else do you want changed in this?
I have a question on four three, it is three F.
What is that one?
Um, that will be the section on.
Oh, yeah, the triangle.
Yeah, the triangle. Could you, you know, shed some light, just sort of clarify it?
It it was it was designed mainly because of scooters. Um, and the use of those, you know, they 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 go, you know, a certain speed. You come, I'm not suggesting that they're going to take the corner at that. They wouldn't be very successful in in that diagram. But if someone were to be pushing a car or walking, scooters are silent. And, you know, you any, I just want there to be good visibility.
Okay. We had talked about how sometimes you come up on a corner and you have to ease way out because there's stuff, you know, in that space there that makes it hard to see out into traffic.
Yeah.
And this is the same thing.
Okay.
Kind of.
No, don't.
Gotcha. My biggest thing, I think, that I'd like to, I have mixed feelings about, but I think that comes down to compromise. But there was a number of comments on it during public comment and then also email that we got about the setbacks about 12 inches from. My biggest concern with that is that I know that there are residents who currently utilize that space for gardening, planting in in height excess of 12 inches, which does currently violate the ordinance, the current city ordinance, not the one we're discussing, but just current city ordinance. There's a house on Broadway Street that I've knocked on probably, I've probably stopped five or six times and they have never been home every time I've knocked on their door to like ask them their opinion about this. But I guess it's kind, that's kind of my concern is that like the minute that we update this, that people who I guess have been in like, like, again, just kind of like as people have been in violation of this, but in a way that's not harmful, I would argue not harmful to the community in any way of.
Can you be in violation of something and not be harmful? Oh, I mean, the ordinance exists for a reason. I mean, I don't think those two things go together.
Well, as we're discussing on changing the ordinance, that's that's the point is like we're discussing changing the ordinance. So it's evaluating whether or not it's an actual harm or not. I mean, we decided that marijuana wasn't an actual harm to the city, so we created regulations allowing for it. That's where it's like, again, like, we know that there's people who currently utilize the setbacks and the right of ways for gardening practices that are in violation of the 12 inches, that aren't a significant, haven't been a significant harm. That's why they haven't gotten tickets. That's why we haven't gone down and mowed down that that planting. I think it's a good compromise, but I'm just concerned about the transition period. I think it's the biggest thing that that I'm I'm concerned about of just suddenly we're updating the ordinance, so now it's drawing all this attention to it and just kind of disrupting the ecosystem of our community.
Pun intended.
Pun intended, yes.
So if we're looking, if we did move forward with, which we're not moving forward with anything tonight on this, but if we were to move forward, would we would it be possible to do a the first year of just education, obviously? Because that's how we usually handle our ordinances is we do education for individuals. We make sure residents understand that we've made these changes. And if we do have to go knock on a door, we say, hey, we want you to be aware of this. You know, you have to think differently about this space.
Yeah, that it that's ingrained in a cult in in our culture as an organization. We we wouldn't go right out and and start, you know, peppering, you know, tickets and correction notices. And that's that's not the way the the city's culture has as an organization has ever.
Yeah, we've we've always moved forward with education first.
Absolutely. And and yes, Mayor, we would do the same thing here, similar to like what we did with sidewalks, snow clearing.
Yes. Are there any more suggestions or comments? Okay, so Director Loria, do you know the direction to go with this?
I'm gonna leave it largely, I'm not going to change a thing.
Okay, except for.
And it's already done.
Yeah, and registered. Yeah.
No, we're not registering. Right, yeah, that's not in there. I I I knew.
Yeah, it was something we were talking about.
Right, I knew I would be probably be pushing it a little bit if I would have thrown that in there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to considering the appointment to the County Tax Allocation Board. Manager dissents, do you want to review this for us, please?
Yeah, happily. Isabella County has asked for the appointment of a member of the Tax Allocation Board. The member must be a city commissioner, officer of the city. The board plans to meet on Wednesday, April 24th. The purpose of this board is to set a maximum millage that the county, township, and schools can assess out of a total of 15 mills. Mills above the allocated amount must be voted on by residents of the tax capturing entity. The city commission is requested to appoint a member of its own to serve on this board.
Okay, so at this time, we can decide to appoint someone for this board or to move it to a officer or a director or staff. Commissioner Ake?
I would like to nominate Mayor Preshbaka as a candidate? I can't say candidate.
The appointment.
As an appoint, I'm sorry, as an appointment to this board.
Okay, is there a second to the nomination?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, at this time, we will take a vote if there's no further discussion or nominations.
Just just a bit further discussion. Could I just get a bit more clarification on the function of the board itself? So again, the maximum, the maximum millage rate that across the township, millage, school board, and county millages, and I think there was something else that you threw in there also.
Intermediate schools.
But is currently at 15. So like, thinking of it as a pie, essentially, you can't, none of them can have larger slice of pie that doesn't come from there, essentially.
Correct. None of them can have a larger slice unless it is approved by the voters. So for instance, let's say within the given scenario of the 15 mills, counties are, and there are minimum amounts as well, too. Counties have to have three. Let's just say if that was the only allocation of that board for the county, anything above that then has to be approved by the voters, if that makes sense.
And and so kind of kind of building off of that then, so this board is going to be meeting to review to ensure like to ensure that like we haven't gone over the share and those shares and everything within the county?
It's not that they can't go over the shares, but there is always the possibility of redistribution, let's just say. So each of those has a minimum amount, let's just say for sake, a board had looked at the, and the board's going to receive budgets from the various organizations that are subject to the board's discretion of of the millage. And they might say, well, you know what, maybe last time we did this, we allotted the county five and we bring the county down to three, let's just say for the sake of argument. Now the county has to, if they want to make up the extra two, they're essentially going to have to go to the voters that way.
Okay. Commissioner Ake?
This is a new board. Are we just adding somebody?
This is the the prior appointment was the city's former mayor, Will Joseph. He no longer qualifies as a board member, and so we have to replace him. And I do not believe that this board, at least to our knowledge, met last year. So this is the first time that it came to our attention that we're looking for an appointment.
Okay, you 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 addressed my follow up question, which is, why are we just being asked to do this appointment right now? So you've addressed that. I, you know, to explain why I nominated the mayor is because we do need somebody who is close to budgeting and who, you know, who addresses that frequently to be to be in that position. If the mayor had said no, I would have proposed the city manager. So that's the explanation for my nomination.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
That 15 mills is set by the 1963 state amendments that.
Do you think they're going to be that or is that?
Thank you for humoring me. I was reading the state ordinances on this and it I was confused for the past week on this, trying to figure it out.
Yeah, and I can't remember the other, it's either that or it's going to be.
Gotta be appointed to this board.
Yeah, there's a there's a tax authority. No, it's got to be the the state constitution then, yeah, because it's not going to be the other legislative act which sets this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, so we will take a vote on the appointment of myself, Mayor Preshbacher, to the County Tax Allocation Board. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Appointment carries. We're going to move on to the announcements of city-related issues and new businesses where the city commission and staff can bring forward any information they have that is going on in the city or that the commission would like staff to investigate. Is there anything? Vice Mayor?
I just have one questions for Erin, but it's since the work has been started on the Town Center project, I've seen some negative advertising about it. And I just wanted to get a good sense of, I I know quite a few, quite a bit of our ARPA funding is going for that, and if you could kind of clarify that percentage or amount.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. In fact, I was going to go ahead and announce it and give folks a reminder if you didn't realize today marks the official first day of construction of Town Center. We've been under construction for a couple of weeks. I know that was supposed to be a much shorter-lived utility relocation project that turned out to be more trouble than they had initially anticipated. But today is the first day that our contractor has been on scene and working on that project. We plan to have the area closed down until construction is completed on August 29th. Now, Vice Mayor Alsager, to answer your question, the project total is roughly $2.25 million. And $1 million of that has been granted by the state of Michigan through CDBG funding. Roughly 1.1 million of that has been allocated by the city, but those funds were from federal funding that the city received as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And then the roughly $150,000, again, round numbers, is contributions from other organizations and in-kind contributions as well, too.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Commissioner Bush?
We are approaching Central Michigan University's graduation, which will be not this coming weekend, but the weekend after that. Already seen some nice photos at the sign at Bellows and University, so keep your eye out for the maroon and gold.
Commissioner Ake?
Manager dissents, I am interested in an update on the community garden. I know that information has been sent out. What is the timeframe for making decisions about, you know, the allotment of those plots?
I don't have that date on me right now. So I don't know what the drop dead date is, but I will come back. I will email that to the city commission this Friday, and we can certainly make that announcement at our next city commission meeting as well.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Windguard?
Today is Earth Day, and so I want to take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners and city staff for taking issues of sustainability very seriously. We talk a lot about, for example, natural landscaping, how people can make a difference just at their own home. I'm excited to continue working on our climate change preparedness plan. Sustainability issues are a significant issue for me and just dealing with the ongoing climate crisis and how we as a community can make a difference for that. So I just want to, again, thank my fellow commissioners for the work and the patience as we deal with issues such as natural landscaping. Thanks city staff for their help and cooperation and thank residents for sharing their interest.
Anything else? All right, so at this time, we are going to open the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda items, you may step to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone joining us by Zoom?
No, we're in Zoom.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Bill Gersler, 1514 East Skylard, Mont Pleasant. First question I would have is on the natural landscaping. I live in the condo association and what if, you know, one neighbor says, yeah, I wanted the natural landscaping, you know, and I've got like a shared shared yard kind of thing, the other neighbor says, no, no, I don't want that. So what would what the kind of rule be on that? And then the homeowners association says, no, we don't want it, but the city says, well, I can have this, you know, who would who would have, you know, say so control over that?
Yeah, Director Loria, who would have? Who would have function, jurisdiction on that?
It doesn't, those residences that you're speaking of, they have their own requirements that you agree to abide by when you live there. And so you can't breach that contract.
Okay. So. Then the homeowners association would.
Yeah, that that's that's the guiding.
And then the other question I had was back on the Placer AI stuff, and you said we want to invest like $18,000. I'm just wondering what kind of return on investment, you know, would you deem for it to be a success, using this money, using the tax dollars, kind of thing, to, you know, how much business, you know, bringing in, would you, you know, expect to make that a successful investment for the tax, you know, for the taxpayers?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I haven't really thought of it in that in that way yet, to be able to say, okay, based on this, I think we, because I I wouldn't be able to base it on anything other than just a gas save. If we get a new business, we're going to get this much in annual taxes or something like that, what kind of business is it? You know, so I just don't know. I wish I could give you a, yeah.
Being a taxpayer, I said, I'm going to keep my tax dollars low, kind of thing. And if it doesn't, you know, generate the revenue justified, then, but it's going to try for a year, kind of thing.
Yeah, I definitely get that. It would be my goal to utilize that data and to develop a report that'll return the greatest value that we possibly can in terms of a dollar amount. I couldn't really give you anything, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to step forward?
This is good. These are our Citizen Academy people.
Please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Jessup Carrion. I live on 109 North Arnold. I came to talk mostly about placer.ai. I'm a business application developer. I work fully remote for a company in Texas. I also have a degree in management and information systems. I think if anyone has a lot of knowledge on this, I would assume it's me. And I really think the notion of pass was kind of a wrong choice. As someone with as much knowledge as me, I would have been alongside with Commissioner Chapman on this to vote no. And the reason behind it is there's very little info that was given today. And I feel like I I understand all the concerns, especially with data collection, but in my opinion, with my professional experience, data collection is nothing to be feared upon. It's how it's interpreted and used that is the major concern of where I'm looking at this. And you you stated that there's a 95% accuracy of what? I I didn't really get an answer to that when I was listening. On the site, it does say 92%, but again, that's irrelevant in terms of the topics that it's saying. It promotes like stuff like crime. And it really, I I do believe that this company is using aggregate data. I do believe that there's no personal information being thrown along there. There's no no reason not to believe otherwise. But one of the claims is crime, that it it has this 95% accuracy on. And that leads me to believe how does, how do you grab crime data without personal data and just to leave it completely aggregate? So there there's a lot of questioning behind what the site entails and what was said today that I I personally am concerned about. And I think Commissioner Chapman hit the. And I think Commissioner Chapman hit the nail on the head perfectly when he stated that all these big companies already have their own. As someone who, like I said, graduated with MIS degree, was looking for a job in data science, was looking for a business analyst position, all of these companies have them. They, they already know if they're gonna come here or not. Not, there's no personal return on investment on us that I believe that we should be wasting our money on this. But where I do think there's a huge positive return of investment is the internship program. I do truly love that idea. And I agree, again, with Commissioner Chapman that there's just no jobs here for this kind of realm of work. Uh, you, you aren't gonna find a position for data science. But to give an internship and allow two students to, to get that experience and then to move on maybe to their next professional career, I think is huge. Uh, and I personally am on board for that. However, uh, another question brought up today was, what colleges are we gonna grab from? To my understanding, Mid-Michigan has nothing that offers anywhere close to an MIS or a CIS pathway. So I don't understand how students from Mid-Michigan would be applicable. But to my, also my understanding, I don't know if CMU even has these pathways. Uh, I do know CMU has a pathway for computer science, but that is a very different realm of what we're talking about. Data science and business analytics are not computer science. It's, it's a very different pathway. So I think in the sense of information, you guys receive very little, and I do believe more is involved to really flushing out that system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forest Penel, 1432 Ridge Road, Mount Pleasant. So with the, in regards to the natural landscape ordinance, tonight's the first I've heard of all this. I don't know what the draft reads. I don't know what the existing ordinances are. So with that being said, I agree there should be some kind of registration. A simplified form, basically giving your name and address stating that you're going to do something like this. And mostly because of the education part of it, like you were saying. Because, again, I don't know the ordinances, and if I see my neighbor doing this, and I think, hey, that's a great idea. I like the look. I wanna do it. Well, then I might just go plant whatever I want. And when you say natural landscape, to me, that's like a English cottage garden, which is beautiful. But to others, it's gonna be letting your grass grow and go to seed. To some, that's natural landscape. So it probably isn't in all the ordinances, but again, I don't know them. I'm not familiar with them. And just registering simply would be, they could tell me what is allowed and what's not allowed. So I think a registration is a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I do have one question about that. When we're talking about this whole natural landscape, is it in a registration? Would it be for all gardens, or are we talking a percentage of the property you own?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, that was part of my confusion, like what defines you have to have it registered or not, you know?
Right, and you could do it combined, you know, if you were gonna do 75% of your property, then it would have to be registered.
I would also assume that it's for, it would be for only those who are interested in doing, you know, in having managed natural landscape. If you're not interested in doing that, do you expect everybody in the community to register?
Right.
I mean, if you're not going to do managed natural landscape, should they come register?
Landscape is, is either gonna be in violation of the ordinance or it's not.
Exactly.
So, so.
So anyone who is gardening should come register their garden?
No.
Okay.
That's the question.
Well, from my understanding, I think we've decided not to do that anyways. So we can talk about all we want. He's not putting it in there.
Yeah, so it's just simply anybody who is interested in cultivating or at least having a managed natural landscape who should go, you know, who, you know, in terms of what you're saying. You know, would then have to register if we had to adopt what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to come forward?
Okay. Peggy Brisbane, 438 South Vanshure, Mount Pleasant. When I'm sitting there thinking about registering, and I know you've said it's not gonna happen, I just want to reiterate, please don't make it happen. Every time I go visit a friend who's a gardener and I come home with a plant, you know, gardens evolve, and that's what you want. I think really education on this day of Earth Day and talking about sustainability, that we want people to feel like they endorse and learn about natural gardens. They're not gonna be quite as tidy, but they're not gonna use chemicals either. They're gonna compost. They're gonna, you know, I might have noxious weeds in my garden, and I don't consider it a native, uh, natural garden, but I'm trying to do more native plants. So, I mean, drawing all these lines seems like it's counterproductive to the goal of creating healthy gardens and healthy garden spaces and beautiful, you know, interesting places in the community for bees and bugs and birds and butterflies. And so I just, I think that the goal, we need, and I don't mean to lecture to you, but the goal, don't lose sight of the goal in getting, and I understand ordinance and inspection. I watch when the code enforcement people drive by my yard.
Yeah.
Uh-oh. But, um, but, you know, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to ask the commission if they would like to take a five, 10-minute recess.
Yes.
Yes, please. Yes, okay, we will do a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 9:12. We're going to resume, and we're moving into our work session where we're gonna have a presentation and discussion on the 2025 to 2030 capital improvement plan.
Good evening, commissioners. I just want to say thank you for giving the opportunity to come and talk about our 2025 through 2030 capital improvement plan. This is really how we talk about how we're gonna invest in the community for the next six years. This is really the infrastructure that our residents can see, touch. It impacts the quality of life for our residents and our businesses. So, uh, basically tonight, we're gonna talk about what's changed from last year. Uh, we'll talk about if there's any significant changes from last year, which this plan is actually pretty, it's kind of in line with last year's. We did a lot of talking about projects and reprioritizing, reprioritizing last year. So what we're really talking about tonight still fits in with what we, we did last year. It's sort of the continuation of the plan. Um, right now, we're actually getting ready to develop our 2025 operating budget. So we're gonna spend most of our time talking about the, the 2025 capital improvement projects. And if there's additions, deletions, modifications that the commission wants to see with projects, it's really important that we, we get that feedback as soon as possible so we can work that into our operating budget. Beyond that, we'll do a very, very brief overview of what's in the 2026 through 202030 projects. And then we'll talk about the next steps for getting the plan to adoption. Just as a brief reminder, to be in our capital improvement plan, the infrastructure has to last at least 10 years and cost at least $20,000. Um, these are some of the sources that we look at for the plan. One of the questions we get from time to time, second from the bottom, Paser ratings. And what it is, is that's a condition assessment for paved surfaces, one through 10, one being basically gravel, 10 being perfect, and all the numbers kind of in between on a, on a scale. For the purposes of our plan, this would apply to roads, sidewalks, and parking lots. Uh, the cash flow pages serve a few purposes. Essentially, it lets us see sort of in a brief overview what's planned for the next six years. It shows the funding sources, the timing of the projects. Um, it really helps us from a planning tool make sure that we have, you know, reserves saved up for the large projects that are coming up. It shows grants, so basically you can look at a project and, and the plan is, okay, you know, we're planning on X number of grant dollars, but it also shows where the tax dollars go. So you can, you can see, um, one of the columns in there is capital improvement funding. That, that's property taxes. So, um, it's dedicated one and a half mil, and the residents and businesses can look and say, oh. and say, okay, this is what the plan is with my tax dollars for capital improvements. So as we start to get into the individual project pages here, it is worth noting, you'll see some on the right-hand side there where it says funding. You'll see some that are GR for grant. Not every single project has grant funds locked up. But if we have identified grant funding as a source, we are confident that that is a source that we can use for that project. Jumping into our buildings for 2025, we're set to replace the concrete in front of the fire apparatus bay over at the public safety building. This also includes redoing our oil separator. So that way, basically, if there was a spill in the garage, whatever else, it basically protects the environment from any contaminants getting out of our public safety garage. We're set to resurface the parking lot behind City Hall next year. That's a mill and overlay. And we're set to replace one of the sections of the roof on the public safety building. For downtown, we are set to reconstruct the alley between Michigan and University. For our downtown improvement program, we are looking at, in our parking lots throughout the downtown, there's a lot of the lower brick walls you'll see around the parking lots. So we're looking at doing the repointing, the maintenance on those, just basically taking care of it. So it's not a more expensive replacement at some point in the future. For parking lot renovations, we're looking at doing parking lots nine and 11 in 2025, mill and overlays. And those are just east of Jockey Alley on the corner of Mosher and...
Fort.
Thank you. And then for our streetscape, this is sort of a new idea. So we have hundreds of streetlights or pedestrian, rather, pedestrian lights throughout downtown. And what this does is, we had our street department go through and do condition assessment on all of those light poles. And we think we're at a point where we should start refinishing, sandblasting, and refinishing to protect the light poles. Because if we don't, then the corrosion takes over and the same sort of thing. We're trying to do the maintenance on the front end to save replacement dollars on the back end, which are always more costly. Looking at our parks projects, for the Chippewa River Bank Protection, this is not replacing, I'm sorry, repairing the Mill Pond Dam, as well as the bridge abutments there. For the medium-sized project, that is replacing roofs on the restrooms in Island Park and Nelson Park. For our Mid-Michigan Pathway, this is the construction of the project that connects Mission Creek Park to the rest of our trail system. And then for the parking park roads, lots, and trails, we're looking at resurfacing the parking lot at Sunnyside, and also doing some other spot repairs throughout the park system. For our public works, we are looking at doing our annual 150,000 sidewalk replacements. And then we have a project to rehab our sweeper sewer drying bed. And what this is, is it's a de-watering system for all of the street sweepings that come in, as well as sewer debris. So it de-waters it. It sends that water to the wastewater plant to basically be treated. And then all of the solids that are left over, the debris that's left over, we can dispose of properly depending on what the debris is. For the airport, we are looking at doing the design on our runway rehab, as well as snow removal equipment. And just as a quick reminder for our airport projects, the city's on the hook for 5% of that. The other 95% is from state and federal grants. It's worth pointing out that between the tribe and our airport partners, they've really helped us be able to meet that funding requirement for our 5%. Because when you're talking about projects that are in the millions of dollars, even 5% is a lot of money. For local streets, we have a lot of overlays on deck. And we're looking at redoing portions of Bennett, Canterbury, Corporate Drive, Garwood, Gaylord, Lincoln, Maple, Morningmist, Packard, Portobello, Sweeney, and Wexford Drives. So we have a lot of thin mill and overlays on deck for local streets. For major streets, basically what we're doing there is we're postponing any projects for 2025. Between our Act 51 funding being down and our projects being more expensive, especially our reconstructions, we're basically hitting pause for a year to allow us to build up funds. Because we have large projects coming up in '26 for Franklin Reconstruct and some other expensive overlays coming up in '26. Sort of the whole water page kind of has an asterisk on it. Last year, we applied for drinking water, state revolving funds. We were not successful in that application. We've applied again. We were pretty close on the scoring, so we're hoping that that comes through this year. But depending on what happens there, we may have to do some reprioritization and, you know, just basically make sure everything's affordable. The one thing that's worth pointing out, and it was one of the goals, whether or not we're successful with the ASRA funding, we're going to probably come to you with a plan for moving to automated meter reading. It's just really between operations and the benefit that it offers the residents. It's really something that is, it's really a valuable project. And we want to figure out one way or another to get that incorporated for residents. So out at the wastewater plant, or Water Resource Recovery Facility, we have the current Phase 2 of the multimillion-dollar renovation that's currently happening. Aside from that, we have our normal facility improvements, listation improvements. This page is going to probably be kind of on the smaller side compared to prior years because we're really almost building, it's not a new plant, but it's a heavily renovated plant. Here's a look at our future-year projects that are more ongoing, repetitive in nature, in the outer years of our plan, 2026 through 2030. And then this is a list of our projects that are more one-time in nature coming up. In the very back of the capital improvement plan is Table 6. And this is a list of projects that we considered were brought forward, but they're either not affordable at this time, or we don't have enough information, or it might be a project where you have a good idea, but the operational costs that go along with it. So it's something that was considered, and maybe at some point in the future, it comes into the plan, but it's not in there right now. It's basically just, you know, what can we afford at the end of the day? There's really no bad ideas on that project page. It's just what's really reality for the next six years. So tonight, we basically have time for questions that city commissioners have. There's no real specific things that we're looking for. Like, sometimes we come to you guys, we'll say, you know, whether or not it's the capital budget or the operating budget, you know, dear city commission, we really need your input on items 1, 2, 3. I feel like, like I said, this plan is sort of a continuation of that work that we did last year. And so there's no specific input staff is looking for. No questions that we feel that we need answered. Next work session, we have anything that's open from tonight. So if you ask a question, it's like, we just don't know. We can come back to you at the next meeting with that answer. And then between now and then, if you have any additional questions on the capital improvement plan, we'll have an opportunity at the next meeting to address those.
When is the next work session?
May 13.
May 13, thank you.
So after the work sessions, we already have a public hearing scheduled for May 28. The charter requires that we adopt the capital improvement plan by June 10. And then September 9, I'll bring you a proposed operating budget for 2025. And all of the 2025 projects that we talk about will be in that budget. So with that, do we have any questions?
The commission have any questions?
Really quick one. Under projects considered but not planned, Table 6.
Yep.
What is columbarium?
So at the cemetery, it's basically an option for cremains.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Commissioner Bush just looked it up.
Okay.
You know, I thought there was plans for the Island Park Pavilion. Did that get moved?
Yep. Basically, we went for a large grant. We were not successful.
Oh, okay.
And so what we're, the plan now is to basically see what rehab we need to do to it. And I'm not entirely sure that's going to fall into being a capital project with the dollar threshold. So, yep. We definitely need to address it. There's some issues there. It's just, it may not be the complete replacement we were hoping for with the grant dollars. But we're going to work it more into operational.
Well, that was a cool drawing.
Yes.
It was. Any other questions?
Not necessarily question, but I just want to say thanks for the completion of the bridge, you know, the bridge on High Street.
Oh, yes. Credit to our PAC, Park Staff, yep.
Yeah, it was done really, you know, quickly.
Yes. That looks very nice.
Yeah, well managed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Looks like a good plan.
Thank you.
It looks good. Thank you so much. All right. So now the commission is going to move on to the discussion of refuge and recycling pickup services.
Last presentation of the night.
Hey, Jason, real quick, do you know about how long your, barring questions, how long your presentation was?
It's pretty short, probably less than 10 minutes. So I'm here tonight to talk about curbside collection of solid waste. Last November, or late last year, the commission approved going up for a request for proposal for cart-based systems, our service. We got three proposals, good proposals. One from Granger, GFL, and Republic. And after, we went through our normal process with RFPs, with staff, and Granger came out a clear winner. They've got a very competitive price, lesser increases year to year at 3% compared to others. They've got good customer service options. I think they're on par with pretty much the other providers in the industry or better. And overall, with the price that they've given, we're looking at a $2.50 increase to the average customer. And then a little more detail about their proposal. It's a five-year agreement with a 3% increases year to year. They also have given the option to extend that by five years if mutually agreed at the end of that period. All of the billing and customer service would be handled by Granger. That's part of the change that we had talked about, where we're offering an exclusive franchise agreement to the provider. They've got a 96-gallon weekly cart service at $9.76 a month. They've also got a smaller 65-gallon weekly cart service for $8.78 a month. And actually, they also have given us an offer of recycling service, cart-based, 96-gallon biweekly for only $3.16. As well as a yard waste bag service at $9.39 a month through, April through November. Some of their miscellaneous offerings, they've got large item pickup for $25, small item for $10. And these are all, by the way, 2025 prices that'll increase, you know, like say by 3%. But carpet for $4, that's if it's cut into four-foot segments. Free-on items, which is, that'll be a nice thing to be able to offer, $20. And then extra bags that you could set next to the cart for $2. They put a good transition plan for the, you know, the changing from our current bag tag program to this cart system. Of course, residents would need to sign up directly with Granger. And they've indicated in their proposal that they'll make every concerted effort to keep the routes the same. Again, that's going to be a weekly refuse pickup with a biweekly recycling. And carts would have to be delivered before the end of the current contract. And so we're kind of looking for direction here if we want to, we say, there's two different options. We could stay status quo, and we could keep going with the bag tag. Of course, we'd have to rebid that contract, continue to do recycling the way we have. Or option two, we would start contract negotiations, or we'd get an agreement with Granger based on the proposal that they've given. This would also include changes to the ordinance to change from the bag tag system. Option one, status quo pros, relatively cost-effective at just over $10 a month for the average customer for all services. It's scalable to the individual customer's volume of solid waste on a given week. And so probably a change will affect those folks that use very little refuse. It'll be a little bit harder to right-size that for them. Status quo cons, of course, since the payment's based on volume, we deal with those strict rules about, you know, overfilled containers and the smallish containers that we have the tags for. And we've got staff time involved in the customer service aspect of the refuse pickup, as well as trying to enforce that ordinance. We deal with new residents to the area. Generally, they're not familiar with bag tag programs. It's a little bit unusual out there now. And then there's not very much uniformity in the refuse bins themselves. It's just kind of a hodgepodge of different things that people are using. Switch to carts pros, less complicated rules, of course. You've just got your bin, and there you go. Contractor administers the billing and the customer service. So that's kind of out of the city's hands for the most part. And of course, it's becoming, or maybe it already is, industry standard. It allows for automated dumping of the carts, and therefore it's safer for the driver. And it's more convenient for the residents. Switch to carts, the cons, again, that's one of the bigger ones, probably the price for certain individuals. It does represent a 24% increase, but again, that's $2.50 when you, you know, figure it out. There's less cost incentive for the increase of use of recycling. So if you've got a 96-gallon cart, then you've got that volume to use. There's not, if you don't use half of it, maybe you feel like you're not getting your money's worth, I suppose. Capital cost of the bins, you know, and that's incorporated into this longer-term contract. That's part of the reason we put it at a five years, so that the providers could recoup the cost of those bins. And then I've got on here, option 2B, like to get a little bit of feedback on the recycling portion of this. Quoted costs are relatively inexpensive to make this change. I think it was $3.15, or somewhere near there for the...
$3.16.
$16, yeah. Thank you. You know, compared to the $2.50 that we charge currently to every resident on their water bill. And so it's, you know, pretty close. And this would be a single-stream cart-based service. Now, if we do make that change, then we would have to work with the county to either exit or modify our agreement. The MRF has been working with some single-string material. And so there may be a possibility that they would still be able to service our recycling to a certain extent anyway. But we would have to work that out with the MRF. And of course, we build into any contract, we'd be looking to make sure that the material, eventually, when the MRF is capable of taking that single stream, if they aren't currently, we would want to make sure that it does go there once they are capable. So that's all I had. I want to take it back to the...
Commissioner Bush?
When they pick up, when it theoretically...
Can you move your microphone back?
Oh, sorry, yes.
I did that earlier.
Thank you.
So theoretically, if Granger were to be awarded this contract, and they would drop off the carts, you said it would be done before the other contract ended. I'm just concerned, from an environmental standpoint, of all of a sudden, in town, some thousand of refuse bin is now obsolete, and they're all big plastic items that theoretically could hopefully be recycled. So is there, has that been discussed at all, too, like what the city might do to maybe establish a stage, like everybody with a Tuesday trash pickup can get their bin recycled this day, anybody with a Wednesday trash can get their old bin? Do you follow me?
Yeah, sure.
I just think that should be promoted to discussion.
Yeah, it's definitely a consideration. Because, yeah, it's going to be a lot of...
There'll be a lot of big plastic bins, yeah.
Yep. So that's a good idea, that maybe we can get something set up so that either drop off or something to that effect.
I would just see if maybe it would be something Granger would be willing to do, you know, as part of the deal. You know, they're already coming here.
We actually do have representatives from Granger here tonight, so, in case there are any other questions.
Commissioner Ake?
Okay. So I just, I'm asking for clarity here. So I'm looking at, could you go back to your very first...
very first slide, actually, the one with the bins?
That one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, okay. So based on, given what you're saying, oh, mine, my thing has gone too big. Given what you're saying, based on what I see here, there are, I know that there are people, I know people, and I happen to be one of them, I don't recycle, I don't have enough trash for each week, so somebody like me would probably be doing the bi-weekly, you know? Is that what this is? Yeah, look at that, the bin there says 96 gallons.
That's for recycling, that's for recycling.
Okay, cool, then I will go to my question here, which says, so if you are not able to, you know, fill your container each week, then what? Because you have 96-gallon weekly cart service.
And you have a 65-gallon weekly car service, you could buy, you could purchase a 65-gallon.
I don't think I do 65-gallon.
But $8.78 a month.
If you didn't produce as much trash, you could do the 65.
Yeah, I don't produce that much trash.
Then just don't put it out every week.
Mm-hmm. And so for the recycling, then you do, you know, you can do the, okay. Well, this is going to be interesting.
With the city, you have to go ahead of time to buy, like, the large trash tags, right, for large items, right?
Yes.
Does Granger have a service where you could, like, how do you let them know you're going to have a large trash item? Do you, can you do it online? Can you?
I believe you can do it online, yeah.
Oh.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, please.
Good evening, my name's Scott Truman, I'm the Director of Sales and Market Development with Granger.
Okay.
So we do have a very robust e-commerce platform, if you will, so the hope would be is that we would direct the residents to our website, that's where they'd be able to sign up for the service, and if they have a bulk item for that, they'd be able to sign up for that removal, pay for it on the site as well, so it'll all be managed through that. It would take us a little while to get the rhythm, to see how many bulk items we put out, but typically, what we do is, we pick a bulk item day, so they would send us the message, yeah, I have a bulk item, they pay for it, we'd send them back a confirmation, let them know the day we're going to pick it up.
Commissioner Windguard?
Just due to the time, I know there's a commissioner who has time constraints, just based on their situation, could I make a motion to postpone?
You're going to postpone this discussion?
Just into the next meeting, it'd be the first meeting in May, to continue this discussion.
Would there be any support in that? Because we don't normally make motions at the...
I wouldn't, I mean, the representatives are here, so I would like to continue.
You can probably, I mean, wrap this up in a few, 10, 15 minutes?
Yeah, okay.
If we can, if we can wrap this up in the next five minutes?
Okay, yeah, certainly, if there's no support, yeah.
Yeah.
I just have a question. I'm one of the condo owners that doesn't produce much garbage, and so we had the idea that maybe with my next-door neighbor and I, we would share a bin and share the cost. But we have yard service that takes care of all of our yard waste, so I wonder if it's a kind of a menu where I'd say, yes, I want this, yes, I want this, and no, I don't want that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is this significantly cheaper? Because I talk about Union Township a lot, because my next-door neighbor's in Union Township. They can do whatever they want. So is this significantly cheaper? Because what we don't want to do is get in a contract with, now, I love Granger, I've always had Granger. Well, we don't want to get into a contract with Granger and be unhappy like we've been with Republic, and then not be able to get out of it. And so what, is it significantly cheaper to be in a contract for five years with Granger than to say, you can have Granger, you can have Republic, or you can have Waste Management and have a free market to do that? Because that's what Union Township does.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at their...
Or Kings.
Pricing lately, I know that that's, this appears to me to be very competitive.
Yeah, I'm surprised, yeah.
So I'd be surprised if it's not less expensive, but there's also other considerations with that, you know, the routes, having bins out all different times, you know, if everybody's got different service providers and all of that, and so, you know, less...
Well, the problem is that, because we have Union Township in the, I mean, there's routes all the time through all of those providers. So I, for me, I mean, I know that's something we've talked about a lot, but there's, I mean, there's companies coming through all the time everywhere anyways, because they got to drive through the city when they're already picking up in Union Township. I mean, they're driving down High, they're driving down Picker, you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure, but they're not in the neighborhoods, you know.
Yeah.
You know, picking up.
Well, and I think that by doing this as a city, as a unit, we actually reduce the cost, because we're saying, the city residents...
Well, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Is going to, we're giving you the city residents, and that's going to reduce your cost.
The, what we've offered for service to be the exclusive hauler, it's about a third of the cost of the next lowest hauler. Now, my, for my rates, this is about, it's, well, my normal rate is $34, so we're offering trash here for $9.76. Yeah, it's a significant discount.
I understand, I mean, I...
Yeah, it is, based on the exclusive.
It's fine we have for two.
So, but with Mary's question, I mean, is that really a possibility? I won't have your problem, but is that, is it really a possibility to say, I can have, because, I mean, right now, I could use my neighbors who has Granger, but is that a possibility to say, there's four of us here, we'll all share one bin and...
As we understand it from the RFP, yes.
Okay.
That it's, that we would be the only hauler in the city, but residents would not have to go with the contract, they just can't have another hauler come and collect.
So what about the, because right now, we have it where if you have, what is it, four or more rentals in a unit, you can have a different provider?
Yes.
So how is that? We plan on leaving those categories alone, so that portion of ordinance, we're not changing. It's just for the single-family, the folks that are doing bag tag now would be part of this new program, so.
All right, are there any other questions, any other concerns?
No, I think this is...
Do we have direction?
I think we should move forward with this.
Okay.
I mean, it's relatively cheaper than buying those tags.
Oh, I do have one more question about those tags. So what about people that have these tags?
Yeah, so we have discussed that a little bit.
What's that?
It won't happen until January.
Yeah, until January, but we have discussed that, and they'd be able to return those probably at City Hall, so.
Okay.
We talked about having some sort of window where your tags are back, because they're all serial, I can let them, yeah.
Okay.
Because I have a lot of them.
All right, so, any other discussion, any other questions? We have direction?
Yep.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no.